This is a virtual meeting using the Zoom platform. Members of the public can view this meeting live on Channel Eight where the city's website. Live Spanish translation services are being provided for tonight's council meeting by telephone. Please dial seven two zero three eight six nine zero two three and use code one zero four zero nine one star.
Sin necesidad interpretación para esta junta puede marcar siete veinte tres ocho seis nueve cero dos tres usando el código uno cero cuatro cero nueve uno estrella.
Thank you, Councilmember Wadiola. If you're a council member, please be sure to have your video camera on and be mindful that we are streaming this meeting on Channel Eight and on our city's website. The chat function is disabled to ensure that the public can see all portions of the meeting. The city clerk is the host of the meeting and I and our IT staff will be the co-host. Council members and panelists will be able to meet themselves when recognized. Please mute yourself when you finish speaking and remember to lower your virtual hand to prevent disruptions. This time I'd like to call a special meeting for the Urban Renewal Authority to order and ask the secretary to call the rule.
Chair Hughesman. Vice Chair Frank. Commissioner Madera.
President.
Commissioner Alan Thomas.
Present.
Commissioner Noble. Commissioner Wadiola.
Present.
Commissioner Hurst.
Present.
Commissioner Grimes.
Present.
Commissioner Smith.
Present.
Commissioner Boucher.
Present.
Commissioner Lewis.
Present.
Commissioner Fairfield.
Present.
Commissioner Tedesco. Chair Hughesman, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson. This time I'm looking for a motion in a second to excuse those members not present. Commissioner Grimes.
So moved.
Commissioner Alan Thomas.
Second the motion.
I have a motion in a second to excuse those members not present. Is there any discussion? Seeing their request for discussion. We'll do a voice vote. All those in favor, please raise your physical hands in the chat window. Your vote can be counted. And that will pass unanimously this evening. Next up, we have minutes. Looking for a motion in a second to approve the minutes. Commissioner Alan Thomas.
So moved.
Commissioner Hurst.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to approve the meeting minutes. Is there any discussion? Seeing no request for discussion, we'll do a voice vote again. Please raise your physical hands in the chat window if you're in favor. And that is going to pass unanimously. Very good. Thank you. Next up, we have our continuation of a public hearing that we opened two weeks ago. This is for URA Resolution two zero two one dash zero one for adopting the 2022 budget of the Urban Renewal Authority. This time I will reopen the public hearing and ask the clerk to recognize anyone registered to speak.
Chair Hughesman, Steve Douglas is registered to speak at tonight's meeting. Steve, you should be able to unmute yourself and you'll have three minutes once you begin.
Thank you. I'm sorry, is this? This is the regular meeting or is this the URA?
This is for the URA, Steve.
Oh, I was gonna speak on the budget for not the URA, so I'm not sure if. It may hit that by accident, so I apologize.
Yeah, I believe you select the wrong one. Thank you, Steve.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Gibson, is anybody else registered to speak?
Chair Hughesman, no other members of the public register to speak.
Thank you, sir. This time, does anybody on the board have any questions for staff concerning the 2022 budget for the Urban Renewal Authority? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Now looking for a motion in a second to adopt Resolution URA two zero two one dash zero one. Commissioner Hurst.
So moved.
Commissioner Grimes.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion in a second to adopt Resolution URA twenty twenty dash zero one. Is there any discussion? Seeing no request for discussion, we'll do a voice vote. All those in favor, please raise your physical hands in the chat window. Your vote can be counted. That is going to pass unanimously. This time I'm going to adjourn to the NIGID meeting. We thank all the URA commissioners who joined us this evening. Have a good evening and happy holidays. This time I'm gonna call the NIGID meeting to order and ask the secretary to call the rule.
Chair Hughesman.
Present.
Vice Chair Frank. Board Member Madera.
Present.
Board Member Alan Thomas.
Present.
Board Member Noble. Thank you. Board Member Wadiola.
Present.
Board Member Hurst.
Present.
Board Member Grimes.
Present.
Board Member Smith.
Present.
Chair Hughesman, you have a quorum.
Thank you. At this time, I'm looking for a motion in a second to excuse those members not present. Board Member Alan Thomas.
So moved.
Board Member Hurst.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to excuse those members not present. Is there any discussion? Seeing no request for discussion, we'll do a voice vote. All those in favor, please raise your physical hands in the chat window. Your vote can be counted. That will pass unanimously to zero with one absence. This time, we're gonna do the minutes from previous meeting. Looking for a motion in a second to approve the minutes. Board Member Alan Thomas.
So moved.
Board Member Hurst.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to approve the meeting minutes. Is there any discussion? Seeing no request for discussion, we'll do a voice vote by raising our physical hands in the chat window if you're in favor. Thank you. That'll pass unanimously to zero with one absence. Next, we'll move on to our public hearing for NIGID Resolution two zero two one dash zero nine, a resolution adopting the 2022 budget for the Northern Infrastructure General Improvement District. This time I will reopen the public hearing and ask Mr. Gibson to please recognize anyone registered to speak.
Mayor Hughesman, no members of the public register to speak on this matter.
Thank you. Does anybody on the board have any questions for staff regarding this resolution? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and I'm looking for a motion in a second to adopt Resolution NIGID twenty twenty one dash zero nine. Board Member Hurst.
So moved.
Board Member Grimes.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion in a second to adopt Resolution NIGID twenty twenty one dash zero nine. Is there any discussion? Seeing no request for discussion, we'll do a voice vote. All those in favor, please raise your physical hands in the chat window. And that is gonna pass eight to zero with one absence. This time I will adjourn the NIGID meeting and call the ECA GID meeting to order and ask the secretary to call.
Chair Hughesman.
Present.
Vice Chair Frank. Board Member Madera.
Present.
Board Member Alan Thomas.
Present.
Board Member Noble.
My mind is wandering, present.
Thank you. Board Member Wadiola.
Present.
Board Member Hurst. Board Member Grimes.
Present.
Board Member Smith.
Present.
Chair Hughesman, you have a quorum.
At this time, I'm looking for a motion in a second to excuse the member not present. Board Member Alan Thomas.
So moved.
Board Member Hurst.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to excuse the member not present. Is there any discussion? Seeing no request for discussion, we'll do a voice vote. All those in favor, please raise your physical hands in the chat window. Your vote can be counted. And that is gonna pass unanimously to zero with one absence. This time, we will do the minutes. Looking for a motion in a second to approve the minutes. Board Member Hurst.
So moved.
Member Grimes.
Second motion.
I have a motion in a second to approve the minutes. Is there any discussion? Seeing no request for discussion, we'll do a voice vote. All those in favor, please raise your physical hands in the chat window. Your vote can be counted. And that is gonna pass eight to zero with one absence. This time, we will continue the public hearing for Resolution ECA GID twenty one dash zero seven, a resolution adopting the 2022 budget for the ECA GID. And I reopen the public hearing and ask the clerk to recognize anyone registered to speak.
Chair Hughesman, no members of the public register to speak on this matter.
Thank you, sir. Does anybody on the board have any questions for staff? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and I'm looking for a motion in a second to adopt Resolution ECA GID twenty one dash zero seven. Board Member Alan Thomas.
So moved.
Board Member Grimes.
Second motion.
I have a motion in a second to adopt Resolution ECA GID twenty one dash zero seven. Is there any discussion? Seeing no request for discussion, we'll do a voice vote. All those in favor, please raise your physical hands in the chat window. Your vote can be counted. And that is gonna pass unanimously eight to zero with one absence. This time I will adjourn from the ECA GID meeting and call the ERA GID meeting to order and ask the secretary to call the rule.
Chair Hughesman.
Present.
Vice Chair Frank. Board Member Madera.
Present.
Board Member Alan Thomas.
Present.
Board Member Noble.
Present.
Board Member Wadiola.
Present.
Board Member Hurst.
Present.
Board Member Grimes.
Present.
Board Member Smith.
Present.
Chair Hughesman, you have a quorum.
Thank you. At this time, I'm looking for a motion in a second to excuse the member not present. Board Member Hurst.
So moved.
Board Member Grimes.
A second motion.
I have a motion in a second to excuse the member not present. Is there any discussion? Seeing no request for discussion, we'll do a voice vote by raising our physical hands in the chat window if you're in favor. And that is gonna pass unanimously eight to zero with one absence. This time we have a discussion over the minutes. Looking for a motion in a second to approve the minutes. Board Member Hurst.
So moved.
Board Member Alan Thomas.
Second the motion.
I have a motion in a second to approve the minutes. Is there any discussion? Seeing no request for discussion, we'll do a voice vote. All those in favor, please raise your physical hand in the chat window. Your vote can be counted. And that will also pass unanimously eight to zero with one absence. We'll now move on to our public hearing for the resolution of ERA GID twenty one dash zero three, a resolution adopting the 2022 budget for the ERA GID. This time I will reopen the public hearing and ask clerk to recognize anyone registered to speak.
Chair Hughesman, no members of the public register to speak on this matter.
Thank you, sir. Does anybody on the board have any questions for staff? Board Member Noble.
Thank you. I'm looking at the administrative costs, which are about three quarters of a million. And I'm curious what that money goes towards. Oh, and I see Jason is back. Welcome back, Jason.
If Cheryl Carson's is available, she can answer that question the best.
Yep, I am moving over Cheryl now. Thank you. Cheryl, you should be able to unmute yourself. Cheryl may be experiencing some technical difficulties. Let me see if I can reach her.
No action will be required by the city council. The city council is not able to hear any comments at this time on land use matters that are before or may come for council. Please reserve such comments for the appropriate public hearing. As a reminder, we take your comments seriously, but do not generally respond to comments until later in the evening. Council must wait until administrative council business to take action in response to citizen communication. Council members can ask questions of speakers if desired. The city needed advanced registration in order to participate in citizen communication for this meeting. If you're currently in the meeting to speak during citizen communication, please listen for me to call your name and the clerk will unmute you so you may begin. If you do not respond or disconnected, you may miss your chance to comment. Please give your name and address for the record and keep your comments limited to three minutes. Council member wants to ask a question, please ask to be recognized when the speaker is finished. There are two speakers this evening. First is Steve Douglas.
Steve, you should be able to unmute yourself and you'll have three minutes once you begin.
Thank you. Thank you, council and a good evening, mayor and city council. Thanks for giving the opportunity to speak tonight. I just wanted just to reiterate what occurred last week in a special meeting. About making sure that sun sets and I do understand that depends on who gets voted, they could be brought back. And voted on to extend it, but I'm urging you as. Other residents, it's it's the talk of the town of what's been given over 20 years and in knowing that. That was well established 20 years ago and you know, give incentive for a. Someone to come in and actually start building a north in at the process. Maybe some things and then into play out as like they wanted to and bringing a new master developer in. But four years to go, but still though, please, please stay the true, sorry, please stay true. To what was stated last week and let it sunset and also. I'd see that when it comes to the budget for 2022. That does not include what could be a significant amount of money with the impact fees because what we're slated to. Commerce City is slated to bring in another 1,500 homes next year. With that said. See, we're currently the impact fees around 1,100. And it's was also shown that should be around 5,000 per lot. Know that. Jay now Oakwood. On the drainage impact fees was for $403 per lot and it wasn't stated yet. What those new fees will will be so. Uh, that's all I have to say. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Douglas, does anybody on the council have any questions for the speaker? Seeing now we'll move on to our next speaker who is Christie Douglas.
Christie, you have three minutes once you begin.
I'm sorry, mayor and council, she's having trouble. Uh, trying to connect the phone number that she was given is not is not working, so she's not here. Unless she shows up in any minute here, but I'd I'm at the as a present time, she's not able to speak, so thank you.
Thank you, Steve. And mayor, I do not see Christie in the meeting at this time. Mayor, I believe you're muted.
Thank you. Thank you for speaking with us tonight. A follow up is necessary. You should expect to be contacted by a staff member. Members of the public were also able to submit comments online and by mail. No written comments were received by the deadline. Anyone wishes to speak at future council meeting, please check the meeting agenda and city website for information on how to register or submit written comments. We'll now move on to proclamations. We have three proclamations this evening. The first is extra mile day would like to ask the city clerk to read the proclamation.
Whereas Commerce City is a community which acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community. When its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism and services and. Whereas Commerce City is a community which encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community. By giving themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends and community and. Whereas Commerce City is a community which chooses to shine a light and celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who go the extra mile. In order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community and. Whereas Commerce City Commerce City acknowledges the mission of extra mile America to create 550 extra mile cities in America. It's proud to support extra mile day on November 1st, 2021. Now therefore, it is hereby proclaimed that November 1st, 2021 be extra mile day in Commerce City. The city council urges each individual in the community to take time on the state to not only go the extra mile in his or her own life. But to also acknowledge all of those who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make their organizations, families, community, country and world a better place.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson. Looking for a motion in a second to approve the proclamation. Councilmember Alan Thomas.
So moved to prove the proclamation for the extra mild day.
Councilmember Grimes.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion in a second to approve the proclamation. Is there any discussion? Seeing no request for discussion, we will do a voice vote. All those in favor, please raise physical hands in the chat window. Not all passion unanimously to zero with one absence. Except we have a proclamation for small business Saturday. Mr. Gibson, would you please read the proclamation?
Whereas according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 31.7 million small businesses of the United States. They represent 99.7% of firms with paid employees. And they are responsible for 65.1% of net new jobs created from 2000 to 2019 and. Whereas small businesses employ 47.1% of the employees in the private sector in the United States. 88% of US consumers feel a personal commitment to support small businesses in the wake of the pandemic. And 92% of small business owners have pivoted away or have pivoted the way they do business to stay open during the pandemic and. Whereas 97% of small business Saturday shoppers recognize the impact they can make by shopping small. 85% of them also. Encourage friends and family to do so. And whereas 56% of shoppers reported they shopped online with a small business on Small Business Saturday in 2020. And more than 50% of consumers who reported shopping small endorsed a local business on social media or shopped at a local business because of a social media recommendation and. Whereas Commerce City supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy and preserve our communities and. Now therefore, it is hereby proclaimed that November 27th, 2021 be Small Business Saturday in Commerce City. The city council urges residents of our community and our and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year.
And Mr. Gibson looking for a motion in a second to approve the proclamation. Councilmember Noble.
So moved.
Councilmember Hurst.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to approve the proclamation for Small Business Saturday. Is there any discussion? In support of Small Business Saturday, the Economic Development Division and Commerce City Chamber of Commerce are encouraging residents to do their holiday shopping from local small businesses, including making gift card purchases from restaurants in the city. For online shoppers, the Shop Where I Live marketplace is a great place to visit to find local products and services. Since the city and chamber have shared the cost, there is no charge to small businesses for this service. Residents can access the site at commercecity.shopwhereilive.com. Seeing no other discussion, we'll take a voice vote. If you're in favor of the proclamation, please raise your physical hand in the chat window. And that is kind of passion unanimously eight to zero with one absence. Last, we have a proclamation for Native American Heritage Month. Mr. Gibson, would you please read the proclamation?
Mayor Heisman, we're actually going to have our deputy city clerk, Jordan Roberts, read this proclamation tonight.
Thank you, mayor and city council. You have to forgive me. I don't have a camera tonight. Whereas the original inhabitants of the North America of North America, Native Americans have played a unique and distinguished role in our nation's history and culture. Through virtue, through vital contributions to government, medicine, education, religion, architecture, environment. And military and whereas the state of Colorado recognizes its oldest and most continuous residents, the Southern Oot Indian Tribe and the Oot Mountain Oot Tribe. As well as 46 historic tribal nations of Colorado and all Native American and Alaskan native residents throughout our state. And whereas November 29th, 2021 is the 157th anniversary of the Sand Creek massacre. Were approximately 675 United States soldiers under the command of Colonel John Chivington killed more than 200 Cheyenne and Arapahoe villagers. Mostly elderly men, women and children approximately 180 miles southeast of Commerce City near Eats, Colorado. And whereas the Sand Creek massacre was a tragedy of worldwide importance and Commerce City is committed to ongoing work of increased public awareness and education regarding this dark chapter in Colorado's history. And whereas Commerce City honors the contributions of the Native American people and encourages residents to actively seek knowledge about the history and heritage of the Native Americans. In our state, past, present and future. Now therefore, it is hereby proclaimed that November 2021 be Native American Heritage Month in Commerce City.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. I appreciate that. Councilmember Waddell.
Like to make a motion to accept the proclamation.
Councilmember Alan Thomas.
Second the motion.
I have a motion in a second to approve the proclamation declaring November is Native American Heritage Month in Commerce City. Is there any discussion? Seeing then just want to thank our city clerk as well as our deputy city clerk for getting that proclamation done as quickly as you did. It was a last minute addition to our agenda and I appreciate you guys working over the weekend to make sure that that was added so that we could. Proclaim this month in honor of Native Americans, especially those that are residents in Commerce City as well as Colorado and our nation. Who have contributed so much to our great history. At this time, we'll do a voice vote. All those in favor, please raise physical hands in the chat window to have your vote counted and that is going to pass unanimously eight to zero. Thank you very much for that. Next up, we have notified noticed council business. First up, we have an appointment of council member to the Rocky Mountain Partnership. This item was continued from the October 4th meeting. Is there any member on the city council that would like to serve on the partnership? Councilmember Grimes.
Thank you, mayor. Yeah, after our our last Adams 14 joint meeting with the presentation from Rocky Mountain Partnership. I felt compelled to be a part of this organization, represent Commerce City as. As one of the elected advisors for this group, so I would I would be honored to be appointed.
Anybody else on council want to express any interest in being appointed to this? Seeing now I'm looking for a motion in a second to appoint councilmember Grimes to the partnership. Councilmember Hurst.
So moved.
Councilmember Noble.
I'll second.
I have a motion in a second to appoint councilmember Grimes to the Rocky Mountain Partnership as a representative of the city council. Is there any discussion? Seeing no request for discussion, we'll do a voice vote. All those in favor, please raise your physical hands in the chat windows. Your vote can be counted. And then we'll pass unanimously eight to zero with one absence. Next up, we have charging stations for electric vehicles. I'd like to invite councilmember Alan Thomas to introduce the item and make a motion if desired.
Yes, thank you, mayor. I have had several residents and constituents reach out to me regarding a lack of charging stations. For electric vehicles in my ward and the south area of Commerce City. Um, electric vehicles are safe for the environment and they're environmentally friendly. Several residents are buying electric vehicles and to my knowledge, there are no public charging stations in the south area of Commerce City. And to my knowledge, there are eight in the northern area of Commerce City. Um, one of them is located at Bison Ridge Recreation Center. And I asked the city manager Roger Tinklinburg, how many were located in Commerce City and he was unsure. So I don't think this is a north and south issue. It's a Commerce City issue. And I and I'd like to make a motion that staff investigate the cost and explore locations. To have a more electric charging station installed in the south area of Commerce City. And possibly more in the north if needed.
Mayor, you're muted. Thank you. I have a motion to direct staff to explore the option of installing more. Electric vehicle charging stations and report back to council the cost and feasibility of doing so with particular emphasis in the southern part of our city. Is there a second? Councilmember Noble.
I'll second.
Have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Noble.
Yes, thank you very much. In addition to the one. Charging station at Bison Ridge. I've also noticed in the last week that there are four charging stations going up at the 711 at 120th and Chambers. And another four charging stations at the King Supers on 104th and that has sparked a lot of interest from residents in this area who are. Uh, eager to make to make use of them and I certainly agree with councilmember Alan Thomas. That there needs to be electric charging stations in the south as well. And hopefully, I believe that we had a grant for the one at Bison Ridge and I would hope that we could. Do the same thing to at least put them in there and encourage any of the gas stations or convenience centers in the south to begin putting in electric. Vehicle stations as well because we're so close to I-70 and 225.
Councilmember Hurst.
Yeah, thanks. I think um, I think some of it's timing too. I I know I worked with Jason on a project trying to. See if we fit into a a grant opportunity in in South Commerce City about six months ago. We didn't win that opportunity, but. There's lots of opportunity coming from the Colorado Energy Office. The. The electrification transportation plan or transportation electrification plan. Sorry, I was trying to think of the acronym. So, you know. I'll continue to connect Jason to some of those opportunities because there is a lot coming out of the state and federal government right now. And so I think. The timing of development is just the only thing hold that was holding the South back. I think it's primed and ready to go. There's a lot of opportunity coming there in the next three to six months, I'd say.
Any other discussion on this topic? Seeing them, we'll do a voice vote. All those in favor, please raise your physical hands in the chat window. Your vote can be counted. That's going to pass unanimously to zero with one absent. Next up, we have presentations. This evening we have our oil and gas and environmental planning and policy monthly update. Would like to invite Anita Riley, principal planner to make the presentation.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
We can. Yes, Anita, just let us know whenever you want us to move to the next slide.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is Anita Riley. I am a principal planner here at Commerce City and I'm new. I have been with the city for two months. And I will be presenting the environmental reports while we recruit for the. Environmental planner position. And so if we want to move forward with the next slide. Uh, in full disclosure, I am not an environmental planner, so I'll be filling in temporarily. Uh, as noted before, while we recruit for Dominic's replacement. Next slide, please. Uh, the oil and gas update, we will not see a lot of changes this month. Next slide. We are still have the same applications available. Through the city and no movement has been made on those. Next slide, please. This map reflects the locations of the existing. Uh, city oil and gas permits. Next slide, please. Again, we have seen no change in the state to a applications. And our next slide would show the locations of COGCC activity. Again, there has been no change in the last few months. Next slide, please. For environmental update, we do have a number of updates. There was an organizational sustainability survey that was conducted at the city. The consultants are now in the process of collecting final feedback from the city on the prioritization of. The actions that were identified by the focus group. The greenhouse gas inventory and the business as usual analysis has been completed and has been posted on the city website. And the Environmental Policy Advisory Committee, also known as EPAC, continues to recruit for two more members. The meetings, however, have been placed on pause until a new planner has been hired. In the meantime, though, the EPAC members will receive resources and information that will that are. Targeted to maintain engagement and to help them prepare for future meetings. The air quality monitoring plan is in develop development. And we more detail is being added to the plan based on feedback from the October 11 study session. A thresholds report is also in development. It will identify thresholds that sources must comply with and it will also provide ideas on additional thresholds. That the city may consider implementing. Our next slide, please. This timeline. It has been slightly revised, but it we do not anticipate any delays to the overall timeline. Our next slide, please. Uh, see. CDPHE has reported three exceedances by Suncor since. That timeline between September 24th and October 22nd. Two exceedances occurred on September 25th. Uh, and involved an exceeding sulfur dioxide due to a trip compressor. The third exceedance occurred on October 8th. It involved hydrogen sulfide due to flare gas and is currently under investigation. Our next slide. Will we will start looking at the Suncor. Information that has been provided to us concerning the community air monitoring Suncor and Montrose. Will be present presenting an overview of the Commerce City North Denver Air Monitoring Program. At the Air Quality Enterprise Meeting on November 2nd. And those reports will be soon available on their website. The PM 2.5 data from the CCN air monitoring is now available on a smartphone application. That is supported by the Love My Air program. Uh, Suncor has provided grants in the amount of $50,000 to the Adams 14 Educational Foundation. This will be to support students for post-secondary scholarships. Classroom grants for teachers and sponsors sponsorships for the foundation's annual 14er Fest fundraising event. Suncor is also providing a $30,000 grant to the Sand Creek Regional Greenway Partnership. And through their giving pump campaign that is in progress at Shell Gas Stations. Suncor is donating five cents per gallon to the Boys and Girls Club throughout the state of Colorado. Next slide, please. Uh, for reportable event summaries, the refinery. States that they are complying with many of the reporting requirements that are placed on them. Including those that are required by permits. They have provided a monthly summary to CDPHE that is available on the Suncor website. Uh, under the safety and environment section of the of the website. Uh, for the PFAS treatment system. Suncor has installed and is commissioning a water treatment solution. That is geared to ensure that the water discharges are below. The EPA requirements for the drinking water health advisory of 70 parts per trillion. The system does use a an activated carbon technology that has a history of success. And the Sand Creek Barrier Wall is near completion. Uh, of the existing underground barrier wall. And they are also building a second parallel wa- wall as well. And that will conclude our report for this evening. I am available for any questions.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate that information and welcome to Commerce City. Glad to have you here. Councilmember Noble, you have questions?
Ms. Riley, I don't want to put you on the spot because this isn't your your wheelhouse, but I noticed in the. City manager's oil and gas update in his update today that Condor had been withdrawn. Um, are you familiar with that or someone else who might be on the line is familiar? With that, um, oil and gas site?
It was withdrawn due to inactivity and that is something that. Is not necessarily new, but maybe new on the report.
Okay, thank you very much and. Condor was the oil and gas site that was located. At the west edge of E470 and the east edge of Lagado. That would horizontally drill towards the arsenal, so it is currently withdrawn because of inactivity. Thank you very much.
Member Alan Thomas.
Yes, thank you, mayor, and thank you, Mr. Riley, for the presentation and welcome to the city. But I was just curious on slide 13, I was confused where it said, um. Improve the conditions, improve the conditions at the boundaries of the refinery. What need, what conditions were improved or what did they improve?
And so, and I'm looking for my a copy on my slides so that I can speak to that more clearly.
If you could just explain to what the underground walls are for or what they do.
Thank you for that. Um, so I. I can only conjecture on that, but what I will do is take your question and respond to you more fully at a later time.
Okay, so you're not sure then what the walls do or.
I'm afraid that I'm afraid that I don't know right off the bat and I'd rather give you accurate information than something that I suppose.
Okay, because I'd also like to know too where the boundaries were, where the underground walls are. And do you know an approximate time then when you'll get back to us with that information?
I can get back to you by Wednesday.
Thank you. Yeah, that's all I have.
Are there any other questions regarding the presentation? Seeing none, thank you again for your time this evening, ma'am. And again, welcome to Commerce City.
Well, thank you very much. Thanks for having me.
Next up, we're going to go to our consent agenda. The consent agenda includes items to the routine procedural informational self-explanatory and non-controversial. They're presented in council for a single motion and vote. Any member of council may ask to remove a specific item for further discussion in a separate vote. Tonight, there are five items listed under the consent agenda. Does anyone on council wish to remove an item off the consent agenda or further discussion? Seeing no request to do so, I'm looking for a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda. Councilmember Alan Thomas.
So moved.
Councilmember Grimes.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Seeing no request for discussion, will the clerk please read the title and take a roll call?
Minutes of the September 20th, 2021 regular meeting. Resolution 2021-95, a resolution adopting a city council's social media policy is council policy CP number 24. Resolution 2021-100, a resolution appointing Matthew R. Hader as an interim city attorney and approving an employment agreement. Resolution 2021-101, a resolution authorizing award of contract for replacement of Peoria Street Bridge over the Little Burlington Ditch to Edge Contracting Incorporated. Resolution 2021-102, a resolution authorizing award of contract for replacement of Brighton Road Bridge over Fulton Ditch to Zack Dirt Incorporated. Councilmember Madera.
Yes.
Councilmember Alan Thomas.
Yes.
Councilmember Noble.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Wardiola.
Yes.
Councilmember Hurst.
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Frank, Mayor Huesman.
Yes.
Passes unanimously, eight to zero.
Good thing, sir. All right, next up, we have a public hearing for resolution two zero two one dash eight two, a resolution adopting the twenty twenty two budget. This time I will reopen the public hearing and ask the clerk to recognize anyone registered to speak on the side.
Mayor Huesman, we have Steve Douglas registered. Steve, you should be able to unmute yourself and you'll have three minutes once you begin. Are you there, Steve? Mayor Huesman, I do not believe Steve is present.
Okay. Does anybody on council have any questions for staff regarding this resolution?
I do. Um, I wanted to follow up on uh Mr. Douglas's comment earlier about um the additional fees that that he anticipated coming in. Um, could someone comment on that?
Certainly, uh, they're not included in the budget since they're they're not approved at this point. Uh, we we typically don't budget for items that are not approved by council. So you know, once, once uh council acts on them and does increase the fees, then we can amend the budget at that time to reflect that additional revenue.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other additional questions for staff regarding the budget? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. I'm looking for a motion in a second to adopt a resolution two zero two one dash eight two. Councilmember Hurst.
So moved.
Councilmember Grimes.
I'll second the motion.
Have a motion in a second to adopt a resolution two zero two one dash eight two. Is there any discussion? Seeing no request for discussion, will the clerk please read the title?
Resolution twenty twenty one dash eighty two, a resolution adopting the budget for the city of Commerce City, Colorado for the year twenty twenty two and providing for the twenty twenty one Commerce City tax levy.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson. We will do a voice vote. All those in favor of the resolution, please use a physical hand in the chat window. Your vote can be counted. And that is going to pass seven to one with Councilmember Hurst voting no and one absence. Next up, we will move on to ordinances on first reading. We have ordinance two three five six, recognition of DOJ grant for rifle plates and ballistic helmets. Does anyone on council have any questions for staff? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion in a second to introduce by council as seated and approve on first reading ordinance two three five six. Councilmember Alan Thomas.
So moved.
Councilmember Grimes.
I'll second the motion.
Have a motion in a second to introduce by council as seated and approve on first reading ordinance two three five six. Is there any discussion? Seeing no request for discussion, Mr. Gibson, would you please read the title and take a roll call?
Ordinance two three five six, an ordinance amending the twenty twenty one budget of the city of Commerce City, Colorado by the recognition of the Department of Justice Jagburn Grant Funds and the amount of thirty thousand ninety six dollars for the purchase of rifle plates and ballistic helmets to be used by the police department personnel and authorization of the expenditures thereof. Councilmember Madera.
Yes.
Councilmember Alan Thomas.
Yes.
Councilmember Noble.
Yes.
Councilmember Wardiola.
Yes.
Councilmember Hurst.
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Frank, Mayor Huesman.
Yes.
Passing unanimously uh with one excused absence.
Thank you. Next up, we have administrative council business per council policy, except for emergency unforeseen items, council members are encouraged to submit administrative business items by the Tuesday before the meeting with another council member's endorsement. Does anybody on council have any items to discuss this evening and them urgent or unforeseen issue? Councilmember Noble.
Thank you very much. Yes, um, I would like to uh make a motion regarding um removing the direction for a petition to the Water Quality Control Commission from the city council. Um, that's my motion.
Sorry, you have me a little bit of a disadvantage. Can you give me a little bit more context there?
Okay, all right. Um, I think it was about a month ago. I don't have the exact date. Uh, the city council voted to um send a letter to Governor Polis and a petition to the Water Quality Control Commission regarding the anti-degradation ruling. The letter from the mayor was sent to Governor Polis encouraging him to encourage the Water Quality Control Commission to reopen the um ruling regarding the anti-degradation rule that um was not technically applied correctly regarding Suncor. At the same time, we ask for a petition which would be the formal process. The petition is uh due this week. It's going in and uh there's a petition going in from several environmental groups. There is also a petition, um and not a petition, a letter in support of that petition that is going in from uh the Adams County Commissioners. However, I don't want to reopen the discussion. I don't think it's necessary. I think that we've made our point by uh testifying in front of the Water Quality Control Commission and um these groups in Adams County can make the point. So I, my motion is then to relieve staff of uh pursuing a petition to the Water Quality Control Commission at this time.
All right, thank you ma'am, appreciate that. Councilmember Hurst.
I'll second.
I have a motion in a second uh to withdraw the request for a petition. Mr. Sheasley.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. Um, good evening. I just wanted to know, this is essentially one of our motions to rescind or motions to amend. It's not on the agenda, so I believe it's a two thirds uh majority required to rescind it. Um, I'll get back to you if that's unclear. I don't know that that'll be a problem. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Noble.
You'll come in.
Have a motion in a second to uh withdraw this request for petition. Is there any discussion? Seeing no request for discussion, we'll do a voice vote. All those in favor, please raise your hands in the chat window. And that will pass unanimously eight to zero. Mr. Sheasley, did you have additional comment?
I did. I just want to clarify for the future, um, because you have a majority of the entire membership, five of nine. That also avoids the notice requirement, the additional vote. So I apologize for taking up your time with needless procedural issues. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate that clarification. Uh, Councilmember Alan Thomas.
I just meant to lower my hand. I apologize.
Councilmember Hurst.
Yeah, are we moving on to the next item or is this a continuation of that that conversation?
Uh, this is your opportunity for administrative council business.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify something that I made a mistake on. I was uh reading, reading a piece of the budget presentation, deciding possibly to ask a question on it. So I I meant to vote in favor of the budget uh resolution twenty twenty one dash eighty two, but I failed to put my hand up. That was uh not intended to be a no vote. Apologies.
Thank you. Any other administrative council business? Seeing none, we will move on to reports. Mr. Tinklinburg.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one second here. In terms of COVID nineteen, the Adams County incident rate for the past two weeks is uh two hundred and thirty five point seven per one hundred thousand. So the transmission rate is still high, but it has dropped from two weeks ago. The Adams County vaccination rate uh for one dose, it's at seventy eight point six percent. Two doses is at seventy one point seven percent. And uh just under five percent have received the booster shot. We are continuing with a mask order in city facilities and on the job. We intend to come back to you on November fifteen to uh ask you, and we'll see what the the incident rate is at that time, but to ask you if you want to go back to meeting in person uh as of December or if you want to continue to meet virtually. So you can start thinking about that. It's not a topic for tonight, but just giving you forewarning that that's coming back up. Um, in terms of uh city manager report uh from the city manager's office itself, uh, staff has selected a consultant for the user and impact fee study. And uh we anticipate to be under contract by the end of November, and that work would then begin in December. Um, council orientation will give you a presentation next week regarding the multiple sessions, so you have a chance to look at that and comment on it. Um, and then in terms of uh grant programs, Adams County has announced that uh they're providing a COVID nineteen grant and uh it's utilizing the American Rescue Plan funding. Those uh grant applications are open starting today. And they're accepting applications from nonprofits, school districts, special districts, businesses and non-governmental organizations. And that's for uh all of those organizations that provide targeted services that meet the county's priorities or for businesses needing additional economic recovery and relief assistance. Also, we received notice this afternoon that the state has launched uh what they're calling Emergency Mortgage Assistance Program. And of course, they give it an acronym, so it's EMAP, EMAP. And that's to provide financial assistance on behalf of income eligible households experiencing a financial hardship associated with the uh COVID nineteen health crisis. And uh the Department of Housing is partnering with some uh Colorado nonprofits uh to uh process applications. Those include Brothers Redevelopment, Total Concept, Neighbor to Neighbor and La Puente. I think it is P U E N T E. My Spanish is terrible, obviously. Um, from the city clerk's office, uh, we have uh uh a fun announcement. Jordan Roberts, our deputy city clerk, has been awarded the outstanding contribution to the Colorado Municipal Clerks Association for his work on the association's website overhaul and redesign. So um, well done on uh Jordan's part. Election Day tomorrow. It's uh obviously too late to mail your ballot. Uh, for those who have not that uh voted yet, please drop your ballot at a drop box, uh ballot drop box, not not the post office drop box, but a ballot drop box. And uh do that by seven o'clock PM tomorrow. And uh there's a drop box outside the Civic Center and one at uh Seventy Second and Colorado. In terms of the city's boards and commissions, there are currently twenty nine vacancies. And uh information about each board and online applications can be found at the C three gov dot com slash boards. Uh, from community development, uh active land use cases are down slightly at one hundred and seventy nine. They issued ninety residential certificates of occupancy in October. And uh so far through October, they have issued one thousand four hundred and four single family residential permits. And then uh the Emergency Rental Assistance Program, uh so far, one million one hundred and fifty two thousand has been committed as of last week. And uh that leaves about twenty percent remaining in that account. And of course, there's another tranche of money coming as well. Um, in terms of court, the municipal judge recruitment position was posted on uh October twenty eighth, and that closes November nineteen. And then the uh court hearings continue to be held both virtually and in person. And that's receiving positive feedback from uh case parties, both defendants and attorneys and interpreters. And uh they appreciate the convenience of virtual hearing attendance. And then in terms of court business, uh that continues to be primarily conducted either uh online or over the phone. And again, that is also receiving positive feedback. Uh, economic development, uh as you heard earlier, uh with the mayor's discussion of the proclamation, um shop where I live is uh available to residents. And uh so access the site for uh for purchasing um gifts and and gift cards at commercecity.shopwhereilive.com. And then uh sixty eleven Dexter Street, that's the former Walgreens building that has been subleased to Dollar General. And uh they have said so far that they're opening this Friday, November five, so that will be back in business. Uh, twenty twenty two budget, uh thank you for approving the budget. Uh, in December, we're going to already bring you an amendment to the twenty twenty two budget. Now, some, it sounds weird to amend the budget before it even starts, but the reason for that is uh there are a number of items that have been ordered this year that because of the supply chain issues, they will not arrive until in twenty twenty two. And therefore, the payment will occur in twenty twenty two, and therefore, we need to carry over from this year's budget to next year's budget, the amount of money that would cover those expenditures. So we'll be bringing that uh ordinance to you in December. In terms of uh sorry, catching up where I was. Uh, we have open enrollment going on this week for employees. And uh for Parks Recreation and Golf, we have uh Turnberry Skate Park has been completed and is open to the public. Uh, they're still finishing a few uh touch up items around around it, but uh it's open to the public. And then we had vandalism at Paradise Island. Uh, the ticket windows at Paradise Island were vandalized and uh staff is looking for basically a retrofit that would prevent this type of vandalism in the future. Uh, and then the Buffalo Turkey Truck coming up on November twenty. In terms of a police department, uh vehicle registration citations in the last two weeks, seven hundred and sixty eight citations have been issued. So there were a lot of people who have been uh delaying going in for either renewing their license or or obtaining a license uh on a new vehicle or used vehicle that they purchased. Public Works, uh, there's a final free landfill day coming up this Saturday, November sixth. And so uh, anyone with a large quantity of items, uh good opportunity to haul it away for free. Uh, Eighteenth Avenue Widening, uh again, that final design is moving forward now that the uh C dot director has signed the uh Fonzie, the uh final order of no significant uh impact. And then uh they're working, our staff is working on a raised grant application and um anticipating feedback on that. Hundred and twentieth Avenue and US eighty five, that interchange, uh staff is meeting weekly with C dot Adams County, Brighton and uh FHU, the design firm, and that's regarding the Cersei grant, which is due at the end of this month. Uh, facility assessment projects, uh council had approved uh a variety of projects. And uh those are in various stages of construction or completion by the end of the month. Uh, for example, uh replacing the fire sprinkler system at the golf course. Uh, that agreement has been signed. Eagle Point, additional lighting upgrades. The report is that that's ninety percent completed. Contra Community Center baseboard heater uh has been replaced or will be replaced, I'm sorry, by uh the sixth end of the week. And uh childcare center asphalt and concrete flat work, uh anticipate that to be done by the end of the month. And then uh Paradise Island to repair the- And then Paradise Island to repair the security system that work order has been issued. Buffalo Run Golf Course Concrete Flatwork, estimate completion of that by the end of the month. And the ADA project planning is underway with contractors to obtain quotes and schedules. And then we have the agenda review. I saw a hand earlier about one of these items, or is that not the case? If not, we can move on to the agenda review. Okay, moving on to agenda review. Thank you, Dylan, or Jordan. So November eighth, we have discussion of the order, basically where we're meeting virtually. So this would be a basically a discussion item for actual action on the fifteenth. And then also, as I mentioned, we will be covering the orientation schedule so that you can review and comment on it. And then on November fifteen, we have the ordinance amending the section in the code dealing with littering and improper dumping. That sets the penalty at five hundred dollars. That's on consent. And then we have the public hearing again on the southwest corner of one hundred and twelfth Avenue and US eighty-five. That was the, the, I think the gasoline station is what stimulated most of the comments on that project. So first is the finding of fact regarding annexation, and then you have the ordinance regarding the annexation and the ordinance rezoning that property. So all of those items are related to that single property. And then there is action on, on the question of still meeting virtually versus meeting in person. And then we also have a N I G I D meeting that evening, and that would be to include the land at one hundred and twelfth and US eighty-five into the N I G I D. November twenty-two would be the first orientation session. And that would be at five o'clock, and then follow that with the Urban Renewal Authority meeting. And that would be to renew the Owners' Representative Services Agreement. And that is with Rick Wells of Regen. He has been successfully basically serving as our owners representative on that project to monitor the construction status and reviewing the pay orders and all of that type of thing. And he's also been assisting with, with the development agreements that, that have been negotiated on that project. And then following that, we would have a study session, and we would have a presentation on the quarter three work plan updates, the Adams Tower update, as well as P U D zone document updates and comp plan mixed-use discussion. And following that, South Platte Crossing Funding Request, and that's for, again, an income-qualified housing project to determine if, if council is supportive of financial assistance for that program. And then November twenty-nine, we would have the second orientation session at five o'clock, followed by a joint meeting with Adams fourteen. And November thirty, a joint meeting with twenty-seven J. Is that adequate for council review, or do you want to go further?
Councilmember Noble.
Um, yes, thank you so much. I'm curious, Mr. Tinklinburg, you've started doing these agenda reviews, and in our council policies, the city council does, is able to weigh in on agendas and when things occur, et cetera. And I'm wondering if that's why you're doing it. Are you looking for our input, or is this coming directly? I'm, I'm not sure why we started doing these reviews.
As I recall, it was a request of council to do this, to review these. And yes, it would provide an opportunity for council to weigh in and provide input.
Okay, that's good, because I just wanted to be clear to my colleagues that, that that is an opportunity for us to do that kind of thing as well. So that we know that we can participate in this process. Okay, thank you.
Sure. Councilmember Wadiola.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Roger. I just noticed that, have we reached out to all the candidates that are running? That they'll have to be present on the twenty-second and twenty-ninth?
By the twenty-second, I would assume, Dylan, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm assuming that the certification of the election is anticipated to occur by then, and therefore, we will know who has been elected.
I believe that drop dead deadline is November twenty-fourth, and then a candidate can request a recount until November thirtieth. So hopefully between November twenty-fourth and November thirtieth, we'll have the certified election results.
I, I just think it would be a common courtesy to let them know in advance that if they win or whoever wins that the twenty-second, twenty-ninth, because they don't get sworn in until December fourth or sixth. So just give them a heads up.
As Jeff Foxworthy would say, here's your notice. But yes, thank you. We will do that.
Any other comments or questions regarding upcoming agendas or the city manager's report? Seeing none, thanks, sir, for your time this evening. We'll move on to Mr. Sheasley.
Thank you, Mayor. First to note, thank you for placing your trust in Mr. Hader. You're going to be very well-served by him in my absence. So thank you for, for approving that agreement and appointment this evening. On a second note, the C O G C sees financial assurances rulemaking kind of sprang up and began again in October with some final data being published on Friday night related to that. We're working with special counsel to get a filing, kind of mostly revisiting our previous comments on the straw dog comment rules from the summer. The revised financial assurances don't seem to address many of the comments made by the city and local, other local governments. And frankly, curiously took an additional several months to get to this point without making substantive change, really substantive changes. So we'll be getting those unfiled tomorrow. The city remains a party in that proceeding because of its prior filing. The city's comments are going to be joined in with Brighton, Laramore County, and I believe the city of Thornton. So they will all through, all four be on the same page there. So that's my report on those matters. Thank you.
Mr. Sheasley, does anybody on council have any questions for Mr. Sheasley? Seeing none, does anybody on council wish to make a report? Councilmember Wadiola.
Thank you, Mayor. Cultural Council had a retreat, and we're going to be asking council for some guidance. So just keep a lookout for that. The, the E I Commission met on Wednesday. They're moving forward for, with the proclamations, working with staff to get those out on a timely manner. So that's kind of a charge that the commission wanted to do. Also, we'll be exploring land acknowledgement that they want to bring up to council. Another thing is that they looked at our legislative booklet, and they'll be providing comments through a D E I lens for council's consideration. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wadiola. Councilmember Noble.
Thank you very much. I just want to add on to what Mr. Tinklinburg said regarding voting. I have been blessed to be able to vote in every election since the early seventies when it first changed. It went below twenty-one years of age. And I want people to know that not only can you drop in a ballot box, but you can also show up at the government center and vote at the government center. In addition, you can also register to vote tomorrow. I do have a question, though. I inquired today of the city clerk where the second financial reports were and when they would be posted. I see that they have not yet been posted. They were due on Friday. So if I could get an update on when those second financial reports of the candidates will be posted, please?
Yes, those are sent to Community Relations at oh, five oh five tonight. So they'll be posted first thing tomorrow morning, whenever they get back in the office.
That's not satisfactory when we're doing an election. There are no hours when we're doing an election. That's really disappointing to me. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Grimes.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to give a quick report. Last week at Rotary, we did have a local business owner give a presentation. Mr. Louis Ortiz, who owns the Stillwater Wellness Center on one hundred and fourth, gave a nice presentation about his business and the offerings there, and just wanted to kind of recognize his efforts in our community to bring some wellness, for lack of another word, to our residents. Also wanted to to comment that I attended C C B P A's Trick or Treat Street at the Adams City High School last Thursday, and it was a fantastically attended event. Just tons of kids. Everyone was happy to be there, and you know, it was just a really joyful experience and happy to be a part of that. So thank you very much.
Councilmember Madera.
Yeah, I just wanted to inform everyone, the Veterans Commission is putting on an event. This is Veterans Day, November eleven. And they'll be at the Bison Ridge Rock Center. And that event's being hosted by the V A, and it's geared towards veterans that haven't registered for their V A benefits or that aren't aware of their V A benefits. So, you know, they kind of want to spread that awareness and get people signed up, make sure that they're getting all the V A benefits that they're entitled to.
Thank you for that. And I do appreciate the members of the Veterans Commission for putting that event forward. That's really one of the ideas that was, went into the vision of creating that commission and making sure that we had an opportunity to extend knowledge to those members in our community who could truly benefit from it. So I think it's just fabulous that we're doing that event at the Bison Ridge and thank all the members of the Veterans Commission to, to do that. That's just, that's really like speechless almost, because it's really, it's just what I was really hoping for whenever we had the vision to put in that commission together. So thank you, everybody, for that. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Madera, did you say it was the eleventh or the ninth?
Did I say the wrong day?
Yeah, so it's on, it's on Tuesday, the ninth. Like you said, it's going to be the veterans, the V A is going to be there as also, as well as the Adams County Veteran Services Officer. And for anybody who knows, like going through the V A and getting your benefits, it takes an act of God for them. And we have these people coming in to help us out. So it'd be really great for everyone to attend or all the veterans to attend. Also, on November thirteenth is the Nine News Health Fair. It's going to be a really great opportunity for people to get low-cost or free health screenings. It's going to be at Adams City High School. And that's going to be on November thirteenth. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilmember Alan Thomas.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to let everyone know, last Wednesday, I had the honor to get a tour of the apartment complex, the new Greyhound park, and got a tour to look at some of the homes that are already starting and the park. So it's a really neat, big accomplishment for the city. The president of Dale West and his staff gave me a little personal tour. So I just wanted everyone to know that was a really exciting opportunity and can't wait till it's all finished. And like I said, the park is really amazing out there also. So thank you, and that's all I have.
Yeah. Any other council members wish to make a report? Councilmember Hearst, I think you're the only one that hasn't gone. I'm sure you don't want to go.
I can't. Holden didn't do anything last week. Sorry.
I myself had a light week. The only event that I attended was the Adams fourteen Education Foundation meeting that we had on Friday. And nothing to report from that. With that being said, we have an executive session scheduled for the evening. Looking for a motion in a second to enter into executive session for the city council and staff and consultants pursuant to C R S twenty-four dash six dash four oh two parentheses or subparentheses F for the purpose of discussing discussion of the annual evaluation of the city manager to adjourn directly following the conclusion of the executive session. Councilmember Alan Thomas.
So moved.
Councilmember Hearst.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to enter into executive session for the purposes stated. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'm not going to vote in favor of this executive session this evening. On two separate occasions, we attempted to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing city manager performance related to an issue and both issues times that was voted down because not all nine members of the city council were present. Given the fact that we have one member not here, and I think that number should be part of the evaluation for the member. I will not be voting in favor of the executive session this evening. That being said, we'll do a voice vote. Two thirds of majority is needed in order to go into executive session this evening. All those in favor, please signify by raising your physical hand in the chat window. It looks like it is going to fail two to six with one absence. Excuse me, three to five with one absence. Councilmember Hearst, Councilmember Grimes, and Councilmember Alan Thomas being yes votes, the other five others being the no votes and one absence. Is there any further discussion prior to adjourned in the meeting? Seeing no request to do so, that'll conclude our council meeting for the evening. Hopefully, the executive session can be re-looked scheduled for November fifteen, so we can get that done prior to the seating of a new city council on December second or fourth, or whatever that is. That being said, have a good night, have a good week, and we'll see you next week for our study session.